Thank you. Alrighty, this is the May 19th, 2021 Borough Council meeting. We did not have a work session yesterday, which was either the best idea ever or the worst idea ever, so. I will ask Mr. Scott to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Want me to lead the pledge, Mike?
Yes, please, Bill.
A pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. My nation under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. The next item on the agenda are comments, petitions, suggestions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. And do we have any such comments?
Can you see the one in the chat window?
I did not. I don't see anything in the chat window, actually.
It's from Ed Smythe, who's asking about parking spaces in front of his house. If you want to talk, Ed.
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
If restaurants can get parking spaces in front of their place, can I get parking space in front of my house?
Daryl.
I'm sorry, I can't. There you Daryl, can you repeat that?
If restaurants can get the parking spaces in front of their place, can I get the parking spaces in front of my house?
If who can get it?
Restaurants.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, that's an interesting question, Daryl. Do we have any other questions?
There's the thing called the Constitution that says, "Private property shall not be taken for public use without just compensation." I'd like for Borough Council to amend the Constitution immediately tonight stating that public property shall not be taken for private use without just compensation.
Well, we don't have the authority to amend any constitutions, but I understand your point, Daryl. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Ready? The next item on the agenda are comments by Borough Council and the mayor. We will start with Ms. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Galey. Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out and voting yesterday and exercising their right to vote and affecting change here in our little borough of Westchester. I think the votes have I want to thank everyone who voted for me again in less than a 12-month period. And also, you know, I think the votes have demonstrated that truth matters and integrity matters. So again, I just want to thank everyone for coming out and voting yesterday.
Mr. Allen.
Good evening. I'll keep it short today. We may have a marathon meeting tonight. So I just wanted to say, next time we see each other, Westchester School District will officially be in summer. So congratulations to all the teachers and students and parents who have made it through an incredibly trying year. I'm extremely excited to get through the next few weeks myself. But, and yeah, again, thanks for coming out to vote. And I wanted to congratulate all the candidates on running great campaigns.
Thanks, Nick. Mr. Stefano.
Yes, congratulations. Same as Nick said, to all the candidates and great campaigns, and thanks for everybody for voting yesterday. Thank you to all the Ward Four poll workers. They, as always, they do a fantastic job. And I want to thank the Public Works Department for helping us do it outside again, which was, I voted by mail last time, but I got to experience it. It was really well done. And it was just, it was, it was, it was nice. So it was a beautiful day for it too. So thank you to everybody for that. And then congratulations to our university graduates. It's kind of bittersweet, you know, I feel really great for you and, but I'm also excited to have a little quiet down here in the Southeast as well. But congratulations, you know, saw a lot of pictures. Hope you get your picture in front of that sign on the corner, because I think it's going away soon, right? Pretty sure we approved that. So get out there quick. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks a lot, Mike. Next is Mr. Flynn.
Good evening from the sweetest word in the borough. It seems to be a common theme. I'd like to applaud all those residents here in the borough and the county that became part of the democratic process. Everyone was on the ballot. Were winners. There were no losers, just some got more votes than others. It took time and effort and passion to do what you wanted to do. Shout out to Ward Six, Charlene Wilson, Herb Schwabe. Again, they did an excellent job in the Sixth Ward, keeping everything moving, keeping everyone safe, and a job well done once again, and hope to see those same people in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Mr. Bracelet.
I don't really have anything this month. Thanks.
Scott. Mr. Scott.
Thank you. Since last we met, America became aware of the fact that Joe Biden had been our president for 100 days. And that caused me to go to the internet and find out where the heck he lives. I know he lives in the White House, but he has a substantial house in Delaware, we know, and it happens to be in Greenville, Delaware, which is north of Wilmington, which means it's close to the Pennsylvania line. And in fact, he told me in person once that Chester County is the nicest part of Delaware. So anyway, he lives in Greenville and I went on the map for directions and so forth, and we are 16 miles away from the president's home. That's it. Westchester, you get in your car, you go 16 miles and bingo, that's where Joe Biden lives. That's why I think we should all feel close to our president. And let me say that in the future days, we're going to be recognizing those who died in the service of our country, in the armed forces on Memorial Day. And so it would be good for all of you to remember that come Memorial Day. I hear noise. What is that?
Not sure, Bill.
Anyway, that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Bill. I don't have much to add. I congratulate all the candidates as well. I had a really nice time hanging out at the polls. It was beautiful weather. Jean Gross ran a tight ship in the Third Ward as she always does, and she does a great job every year. This year she had pens for everybody so that we could use our own pens and take them home with us. So I've got my Jean Gross pen sitting around here somewhere. So thanks to Jean. And that's it. Mr. Norley.
Thank you, Mr. Galey. I want to thank everybody, all the voters that came out. It was a wonderful election. So many people connected with, so many candidates, connected with so many different residents and vice versa. And, you know, this is what it's all about. It's about getting in front of folks and talking with folks and really understanding who they are and and who Westchester is and what we want as people. And that helps inform and make all of us better public servants. So regardless of the outcome, what an absolute pleasure. So thank you to everyone who engaged in our democratic process. Once again, what a pleasure. Congratulations to all the graduating seniors. And to Mr. Stefano's point, looking forward to the peace and quiet down here in the Southeast for a little bit. And to Mr. Scott's point, let us make sure we remember our troops here with Memorial Day between now and, and the next time we meet. What a sacrifice for us all. So thank you very much. And with that, concludes my comments.
Thanks, Jordan. And thanks to Mr. Scott for his service specifically. The next item on our agenda is Item 5A, which is appoint Michael G. Crati as special counsel for legal matters related to the Wyeth Land Development Project. I'm sorry, before we get into that discussion, I need to announce that we had an executive session, May 11th, 2021, to discuss some legal matters. Onto 5A. The issue is whether council will agree to appoint this attorney to represent us with respect to this specific project. Any comments or questions? Oh, Don, are you a veteran also? Oh, I'm sorry. I thank you as well for your service. And if there's anyone else on council that I should thank.
No, I'm not a veteran. I used to just play Army and Guns back when I was a teenager.
Well, we'll give you half credit for that.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you. Somebody messaged me that you were, so I didn't, I didn't want to leave you out if you were. Any questions or comments from council on the appointment of Mr. Crati? Any comments or questions by anyone else regarding item number 5A?
Sue Bane here.
Yes, Sue.
Um, I'm not sure I understand why we need to have a special counsel at this time. And what is his bill rate?
The need for a special counsel is that there's a conflict of interest with our existing solicitor's office relative to this development and their representation of the borough and our neighboring township. His hourly rate is $205 an hour. However, all of his time gets billed back to the land developer, the developer. So we will be reimbursed for the expenses related to this councilman.
Thank you. And why do we even need legal counsel on this?
Well, I suspect with any land development plan, we engage the services of our legal counsel. And with any land development plan, those costs are borne again by the developers. This being a large piece of property with a lot of interested folks, I suspect that there will be a lot of people who have comments and questions throughout the process.
Thank you. And one more question, Mike. Sorry, I'm playing a little bit of devil's advocate here. What is Mr. Crati's specialty? I'm not familiar with Siena law, so how did we get to him?
He was recommended to us and his specialty, I believe amongst other things, is municipal law. He serves as the solicitor for other communities in Chester County.
Thank you. All right, I'll be quiet now.
Thanks, Sue.
Mr. Galey.
Bill, go ahead.
As usual, I can't hear what you're saying, but I'm starting to be able to read your lips. Apparently, you're smiling now. What are you on, A or B?
We're on A right now.
2A?
5A.
I'm sorry, 5A? Okay, are you calling for a vote?
We're, we're gonna have to vote on everything in this session, because there's no work session. I don't know that we need to vote on the appointment. I guess I'll see what Mike Perone's thought on that is.
Well, as I said in my letter, and I quoted you the Sunshine Act, that you just can't take votes in executive sessions. If there's a consensus or something, you roll it out at a public meeting, which you're doing now, and somebody should make a motion with respect to wait a second, Grody is the, yeah.
Be lovely if you would make such a motion, Bill.
What?
You could make such a motion.
But I don't want to make a motion. I want to speak against this.
Well, now's your chance.
Well, but if there's no motion on the floor and you're not going to discuss it, six of us are violating the sunshine law. It's $1,000 a pop, so.
Bill, Bill, it's on the, it's on the agenda to appoint somebody, so there's a vote needed.
What?
It's on the agenda for a vote.
Okay. Well, somebody should make a motion that we vote on it.
You can make a motion to vote against it if you want, Bill, is the point.
Who, who, who said they would make a motion?
All right, Don.
Don, all right, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Crati. Do I have a second?
Flynn.
I'll second, Mike Stefano.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we have a person in a second.
But that makes it legal. May I, may I enter the discussion?
Yeah, I invited you to like 10 minutes ago.
I know you think it's funny, Mr. Chairman, but I just saved this all from a harsh fun. Well, I'm going to vote against this for two reasons. The lawyer who recommended this lawyer is the lawyer on the other side of the issue. Now, you know, I spent a lot of time as a divorce lawyer, and every time there was going to be a divorce and the husband would say to the wife, well, here, you go get this lawyer. It was always trouble. I don't think the borough should be hiring a lawyer because it was recommended by the lawyer on the other side of the case, which is what the situation is now with Kristen Camp. And secondly, if we're going to, and I'm, obviously, we're going to have to hire a lawyer in this situation. And in the past, we've always looked first to law firms in the borough. Tried to give the business to law firms in the borough, and I don't know why we're not doing that now. And so I intend to vote against this. I think, I think it should be tabled and we should see if there's not a different lawyer that we could recommend to ourselves and
I think with respect to your first point, it's very important to keep in mind with respect to your first point that Buckley Bryan is not on the other side of this issue. They're not representing West Goshen Township with respect to this development. They've told both the township and the borough that they can't represent either party to the extent that there's any need for legal representation. So our solicitor, who is not on the other side, has recommended this law firm.
Well, usually on the other side is reserved for where there's an action or a conflict or anything like that. But in this case, the reason Kristen Camp couldn't be representing us is because she's representing the
She's not.
West Goshen, and so therefore
She's not representing West Goshen.
She's not representing West Goshen. Patrick McKenna is representing West Goshen in this matter.
Who is?
Patrick McKenna.
Is, who's McKenna? Is she with Buckley Bryan?
No. With a law firm on Gay Street.
South of Greenwood.
Oh, yeah. Well, I know her. Why? And she's, she's, she's going to be West Goshen's lawyer in this one.
He is Patrick McKenna.
Oh, Patrick is. Okay. Well, then why do we need Grody? Why can't Kristen?
She's in conflict, Bill. She's told us she can't represent us. She's told West Goshen Township she can't represent them because she represents both parties and representing either side would be a conflict.
I understand, and I still think we should find our own lawyer and we should look first in the borough. And Mr. Groody is maybe the most wonderful lawyer in the world, but he's he's with Siena and they're, they're mainline lawyers. So that's my thoughts.
Little enough from the mainline, Bill, from Chester Springs.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Any other comments or questions on the motions before we take a vote, on the motion before we take a vote? Mr. Perone.
Ms. Dorsey. Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Nay.
Mr. Bracelet.
Yes.
Mr. Galey.
Yes, the motion passes 6 to 1. The next item on the agenda is whether to appoint Jerry Disiderato with Dilworth Paxton as special counsel for legal matters related to a borough-owned property on Snyder Avenue. I think in, in the context of this discussion, we should try and be relatively brief in our comments about the subject matter of the potential representation. That being said, generally speaking, the potential representation relates to the Snyder Avenue property. Any questions or comments from council on 5B?
Mr. Galey.
Yeah, Bill.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Okay, this is a question actually from Mr. Perone. He wrote us at 6 o'clock today saying that Kristen Camp believes we should appoint a law firm for assistance. What does that mean in this context?
Bill, I believe you asked the question, you wanted the, you wanted the, an opinion from our lawyer if we should appoint legal counsel to represent the borough in this matter. And Kristen agrees that council should do that.
Kristen agreed we should appoint a law firm for assistance. The lawyer I was looking for was one to review the agreement for us. But anyway, we have a lawyer who did that, Michael Gill, and he wrote an extensive well, not extensive, but apparently he spent a lot of time on this afternoon, and our lawyers have helped us in this situation. My second may just be a comment. Well, there's, there's two things. The second is the complaint that was sent to us, which is State of Pennsylvania and Delaware County and the Upper Darby Fire Company. They're the plaintiffs in this big substantial suit, which is very impressive. And I think we should get in on it, but why is it that our fire company is not going to be a named plaintiff? Why aren't we, why aren't they involved in this situation at this point?
So that's probably a better question for an executive session, frankly. That's a legal question. But at the end of the day, I think the simple answer to the question is that we own this property.
Well, that's a very excellent answer, if only I could hear it. But let me go on to my second point, which is the, by the way, there's got to be a motion on this because what I think we're asked to do is enter into an agreement. So the, there ought to be a motion that the borough enter into the agreement that's been proffered by Dilworth Paxton. Am I right about that, Mike Galey?
Yes, I think we'll, we would handle this in the same fashion that we handled 5A.
Can you nod yes or no? Okay, but we're not deciding at this point to enter a lawsuit, are we? Or is the agreement impliedly authorization to enter a suit?
No, I don't think this is, this is not an implied authorization to file a lawsuit. This is an authorization to retain counsel. The decision as to whether to file a lawsuit won't happen until a few other steps are taken.
Oh, God. Mr. Galey, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Bernie, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Dilworth Paxton as a special counsel for legal matters based on the borough-owned property on Snyder Avenue.
Thank you, Bernie.
This is Don. I'll second.
Thank you, Don. Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Galey, it was explained to us that a test was going to be taken. And based on the results of that, the next step would be taken. And that wouldn't cost us anything. I don't really see that in the agreement that we're voting on right now. It may be in there, but I, it certainly didn't jump out at me.
I seem to, I seem to remember Jerry being asked that last week. And I don't think that's going to be costing us anything.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to remind everyone that when we speak to our attorneys to seek legal advice, that's a privileged communication, and we shouldn't be discussing the discussions that we have with our attorneys. That's literally one of the stated purposes of the Sunshine Act. Is to not require Borough Council people or other, you know, supervisors to reveal privileged attorney-client communications. But Bill, your understanding is right, that there's going to be no cost to the borough for this endeavor. Any other question? All right, Mike.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
I didn't hear what Galey said, but I'm going to vote yes anyway.
Mr. Bracelet.
Yes.
Mr. Galey.
Yes, thank you. Somebody in the chat just said they had a question. DM CCL.
That would be me, Terry McClure.
Hey, Terry.
Well, I, yeah, hi. I appreciate that you guys can't talk about a lot of this stuff. But what I would like to know, if we're hiring special councils for certain legal things, at what point are the residents going to know what's going on? There's two being appointed tonight, and I find that a little anxiety-producing, just to say that this is going on and, you know, you can't say anything, like what it even is generally pertaining to. So I mean, I guess my question is, at one point, when are the borough residents going to be brought into the equation?
Yeah, I mean, Terry, I think we can say a little bit on each. More on the first one than the second one. The, the first one is quite simply, there's a land development project that may or may not be happening at Wyeth, the Wyeth property in the Southeast. And in the context of that, we always have legal counsel for land development plans. Our legal counsel in that, with respect to that particular property, can't represent us, so we simply need another council to represent us through that process due to the conflict that our current council has. And that'll be, that will not cost the borough anything because any legal fees associated with land development plans get charged to the developer. There's nothing at this point, you know, there's nothing happening at this point for that person. I think we anticipate that there'll be a land development plan at some point in the near future, that that individual will review and, and potentially respond to, you know, issues with respect to, but we're just entering into this agreement so that we're you know, issues with respect to, but, um, we're just, uh, entering into this agreement so that we're, we have that person ready to go when it's, it's time.
But let me, let me jump in, Mike. There, there, the land development plan is in.
Oh, okay.
And it, it'll, it'll be discussed, uh, next Tuesday night at the Planning Commission's work session. And it's, uh, that's been advertised on the, uh, website.
Thanks, Mike. So the, this individual is gonna represent us with respect to that land development plan.
Right, that one, that one I understand. I, I, I have to say, yeah, I completely understand that. Honestly, I'm much more concerned about B.
Yeah, I mean, B, B's simply, um, the borough owns a piece of property and we're considering whether to pursue litigation, related to that property and conditions that may exist on that property. But we haven't made any decision to do anything other than, uh, retain the, the law firm related to that property. I suspect that if the, if counsel chooses to move forward with actually filing a lawsuit, that there'll be a further discussion as to that at counsel.
Okay, well, I, you know, I, I understand. I, I, I get it. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Terry.
It's, it's important to note also that if the borough enters into litigation, uh, the borough will not be paying any fees uh, associated with any lawsuits.
Yeah, ni- neither one of these arrangements are gonna cost the borough. Onto number six, which is to approve renewing the lease agreement, uh, at twenty-four South High Street with, uh, a Klat chocolate. Any, uh, comments, questions, or concerns from counsel on this?
Go to the last page, Bill. That's the important one.
While Bill's pulling this up, any comments from anyone else?
Sue Baines.
Yeah, go ahead, Sue.
Uh, sorry, um, a Klat has been there for years. They've made tons of renovations to that, um, space. Uh, they are a major, um, known name in the confectioner, uh, space. Um, they bring us good vibrations. Um, sorry, for lack of any other um, innocuous words there. Um, we, this should be a no-brainer to just say yes. Um, this is, I mean, this lease started, uh, somewhere around the time I was on council, more or less, so it's been a few years, but, uh, this, this should just continue. It shouldn't, I can't say enough good words about this. Um, please, everybody, just say yes.
Thank, thank you, Sue. I, I suspect, uh, I suspect most, if not all, of counsel agrees with you. A- any other questions or comments about the, uh, lease agreement extension? Does anyone wanna make a motion to approve item number seven?
So moved. Mike Stefano.
Thanks, Mike.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Lisa. Now, now we know who the chocolate lovers are. Mr. Peron.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Braceley?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes, uh, the motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is to enter, uh, into a contract with Budak Infrastructure for the Chestnut Street Garage repairs at a total of $240,000. Public, um, Public Works Committee, so, um,
That's me.
Don, do you wanna?
Sure, uh, Al is here. Uh, this is a very busy spreadsheet here, uh, but these, uh, refer to repairs that, uh, pretty much have to be done. And if, uh, uh, if Al could, Al, if you're here.
Jump in, Don. It's, it's, it's repairs to the upper two decks of the elevator.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Elevator problems over the years. There's a couple structural pieces that need to be fixed. Uh, a lot of joints and caulking need to be done. Uh, and then in addition, uh, we bid, uh, the stair tower can rails, the guardrails to be painted, and we're deferring that, uh, Alvin and Telly's gonna send out a new bid package for painting that will include, uh, the Chestnut Street Garage and the Bicentennial Garage, both.
Okay.
So that, the painting's been pulled out of this, uh, contract, uh, but we'll catch it up on the, uh, the next one when we do painting in both garages.
Okay, this was approved, uh, three O by the committee.
Thanks, Don. Um, I think we've been talking about some of these repairs for, uh, years at this point. Any questions by counsel on item number seven? Any comments or questions by anyone else on item number seven? Ready? Can I have a motion?
So moved. Bernie Flynn.
Thank you, Bernie.
Second it.
Thank you, Lisa. So we have a motion by Bernie, seconded by Lisa to approve entering into the contract on item number seven. Mr. Peron.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Braceley?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes, thank you. The motion passes seven zero. Number eight is, uh, entering into a contract with Alpha Space Control to install hot thermoplastic long lines, for a cost of around $15,000.
This, um, go ahead, Doc, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, this is, uh, enter into a contract with, uh, these folks to basically paint lines, uh, on our highways, uh, because our lines are fading.
Any, uh, questions from counsel regarding line painting? Any ca- uh, questions from anyone else regarding the, uh, bid for line painting? Anybody like to, uh, move to approve entering into this contract?
Gally, this is Lisa Dorsey. I make a motion to enter into the contract for the long lines.
Oh, second.
Thanks, Don. Uh, Mike?
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Braceley?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes, thank you. Uh, item number nine is approved donation of a park bench, uh, with memorial plaque for installation at Everheart Park. Any?
I don't think we need much explanation. I think it's, kinda speaks for itself.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Bill?
Um, yeah. Who pays for the bench?
It's, uh, it's, it's being donated, Bill.
And the memorial plaque is, is for who?
Uh, Keith, can you jump in there?
Sure, um, the gentleman's name escaped me at the moment, but it's, uh, a resident that lives around Everheart Park. He's paying for the bench and the plaque, and Public Works has agreed to install the bench.
Excellent.
So you're saying I, I should get this on an agenda before my term is up for my bench?
One, if you wanna donate one, yes.
Maybe if Bill scrolls down on the quote, I can, uh, no, um, any questions from anyone else regarding the, uh, Everheart Park bench? Any, uh, oh, I'm not donating a bench, forget that. Uh, yeah. Anyone wanna make a motion to approve this?
Mr. Gally, Lisa Dorsey, I'm making a motion to accept the donation of a park bench.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Peron?
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Braceley?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes, thank you. Um, item number ten is entering into a contract with MGK uh, to perform emergency repairs at the pump station discharge lines. Cost of $10,000 and to the Minor Street, uh, line at approximately $10,000 to $12,000.
Yeah, this, uh, this item popped up a couple weeks ago. Uh, Sean Mitchell's, uh, had some pictures. He showed, uh, the committee, there you go. Uh, the pipe's about forty-some years old and it is day-to-day. And so it needs to be repaired immediately.
Oh, my goodness.
This is the kinda good stuff we don't see. It's, uh, out of sight, out of mind.
Any questions from counsel on these, uh, pump station discharge lines? Any questions from anyone else regarding, uh, this agenda item? Any, uh, anyone wanna make a motion to enter into the contract with MGK Industries?
Mr. Gally.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Mr. Gally, I'd like to make a, a motion to enter into a contract with MGK for the pipe repair between $10,000 and $12,000.
I'll second.
Uh, thank you, Don. Go ahead, Mike.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Braceley?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the scheduling of a public hearing. Um, I don't, we don't need to vote on this, Mike. We're just discussing picking a date, right?
Yeah, just, uh, yeah, just, and then I, you need to just tell me if you wanna do it at the work session or voting session next month.
Discussion.
Sure. There's, there is no discussion, Bill. This is our, our voting session. Do you have something you wanna say, Bill?
Mr. Gally, Bernie Flynn?
Yeah, Bernie.
We should do it sooner than later to give the people in that area relief.
Okay, um,
You, you only have two options. You, your work session or your council meeting next month.
Work session is earlier than the, the vote session.
I'm with Bernie.
June fifteenth.
That's good enough for me.
Anybody have a problem with June fifteenth? Ready? The next item, and we don't need to vote on that, right, Mike?
No.
Okay, same thing with this next one, I'm assuming. Which is schedule a public hearing and authorize the solicitor to prepare an ordinance to, uh, have the permit a parking area include the 200 block of Lacy Street. Uh, I believe Ann Carroll reached out to all of us on this issue earlier. Um,
Yeah, I'm sorry. You, you, you probably should, I guess you're authorizing the solicitor to prepare these ordinance, or ordinances, so you probably should, you should vote on them. You got, you could do twelve and thirteen together, though.
Eleven and twelve?
Uh, yes.
And thirteen, I guess, actually.
Right.
All right. Could we do them on the same, uh, at the same time, like on the same night? Not the same time, but
Yes.
Schedule the same time.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, is, does anybody have an objection to item number twelve or, or wanna discuss item number twelve? All right, let's talk about thirteen, cause then we could just make a motion to approve eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
So moved.
Does anyone?
Second.
All right, well, we have a motion to approve eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Anybody have any comments on thirteen? We haven't gone through that extensively yet.
I can, I can go over it, Mike, if you want, since it's public safety.
Yeah, sounds good, Mike.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm sure we're all familiar with Minor Street going west and, uh, there are two intersections where there is no stop sign. Although it ends up causing issues because there are multiple people that think there's a stop sign, they wanna stop, or the cross-traffic thinks they're gonna stop, and, uh, it's been recommended that we um, at least by, by PennDOT, I believe, that we, um, install stop signs there, so that's, that's the, the, the long and short of it.
Cool. Thanks, Mike. Any other, uh, questions? This is Mr. Flynn's neighborhood.
We're good to go with it. Residents want it.
All right, any, anyone else, uh, have any comments on eleven, twelve, or thirteen?
Uh, this is, this is Mark Battis. Wanted to make sure that for eleven, uh, Wednesday stays the day. I know there was a couple of documents that had Thursday, uh, as a typo.
Okay, yeah, the, the proposed, or I'm sorry, the agenda item does say Wednesdays. So that's
I know there was a couple of other documents floating out there where it said Thursday, though, so just to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you're right, Mark. There, there was some that said that, but we have Wednesday on here, so it should be, should be good.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else have anything to add to eleven, twelve, or thirteen? All right, well, we have a motion in a second, so we're really cooking now.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Braceley?
Yes.
Mr. Gally?
Yes, thank you. Can we just highlight, I, I guess for, uh, Alberto's, uh, sake, that whenever those stop signs go in, assuming they pass next month, we're gonna have to put some serious, uh, signage and flashing lights up, up there. Cause, you know, the irony is, anyone who's not familiar with the borough gets confused, and now everyone who is familiar with the borough is gonna get confused, so, um, let's just make sure whenever they go up, assuming it gets passed next month, that we have a- all sorts of sirens and flashing lights and signs and everything. Um, item number fourteen is to approve hiring part-time dispatchers to correct scheduling issues. Mr. Stefano, you wanna set the table for this one?
Uh, yeah, I, this has been ongoing for the last, I feel like, couple meetings last month and everything, and, um, there was some discrepancy about whether this was a cost savings or, uh, or what, and I think it, essentially, if I'm correct, I'm sure Chief Moorhead's on here, he can correct me, but I think it's a, essentially, a cost-neutral, but um, it would provide a little better service for the borough, having dispatchers not have to, you know, not to work overtime and, um, yeah, spread it out more. So if that's, I think I got all that correct. If Chief Moorhead wants to correct me, but
But that's correct, Mr. Stefano, you're good.
Thank you, uh, Mike and Chief Moorhead. Uh, anyone else have, uh, on counsel, have any comments or questions about number fourteen? Anyone else in attendance have any comments or questions about number fourteen? Anybody wanna make a motion on number fourteen?
So moved. Bernie Flynn?
Thanks, Bernie.
I second.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Peron.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Hi.
Mr. Braceon.
Yes.
Mr. Gally.
Yes, thank you. Next is the Smart Growth Committee. First item is approve the reverse subdivision at 631 North Matlack Street. What's going on with this, this application, Don?
Actually, this is just taking two existing lots and creating one lot. It doesn't, it doesn't involve any construction. And was, we got, yeah, the letters right there, Sumaran from the Planet Commission. They had a favorable recommendation to proceed with this reverse subdivision.
Bill, can you put up the site plan, Bill?
Yeah.
This is a Sue Bane no-brainer. Two lots, we're making them bigger.
While, while Bill's zooming this in, any questions from council on this application?
What about tax implications for property? Since it's two different lots, will, how can we charge for the property tax? Well, how it will be assessed?
How, well, that's up to the county assessor, but the, it'll be taxes, one, one parcel of ground as opposed to two.
So do they save money or make, or increase their payment?
I don't know that, Bernie, to be honest with you. The, the value of the ground is the value of the ground. I would assume it's probably going to stay the same. But if it's not, it would be minimal either way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council or anyone else? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the reverse subdivision?
So moved.
Oh, I'll second it.
Thank you, Bernie and Mike.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Hi.
Mr. Bray, Braceon.
Yes.
Mr. Gally.
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is to approve the rental licensing fees and zoning review fees and approve a resolution to revise the fee schedule. This is relatively standard stuff. Any questions or concerns from anyone on council? Any questions or concerns from anyone else? Anyone like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 16?
Gally, I make.
I heard Braceon first, but I think Lisa, you were also talking. Will you second, Lisa?
I'll second.
Awesome. Motion by Don, second by Lisa, Mr. Peron.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Hi.
Mr. Braceon.
Yes.
Mr. Gally.
Yes, thank you. Item number 17 is to improve, I'm sorry, approve the endorsement of the Public Art Commission Piano in the Plaza application. Don, can you tell us a little bit about the piano in the plaza?
Yeah, this would involve bringing musicians in on Sundays from about 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM to provide a little bit of local ambiance. It would, these would not be rock concerts or anything like that. It could involve students pretty much anywhere. And they will be relatively, they'll be inter intrusive. And the electric piano would be supplied by tailors, so there is no cost to us. Basically, yeah.
This is a pretty cool idea.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions or comments on the piano in the plaza application? We can get Mr. Stefano up there with his saxophone.
I tried. I, I cost too much.
I'll play the piano, I'll play the piano if he plays.
I, I think we can have a whole Borough Council band up there. I'll, I'll volunteer on tambourine. Any other questions or comments on the piano in the plaza?
I got you beat. I'll do the triangle.
All right, anybody, anybody want to make a motion to approve the piano in the plaza application?
I move, we approve the piano in the park, piano in the plaza concept.
I second.
Thank you, Lisa. Mike?
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Hi.
Mr. Braceon.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Gally.
Yes, thank you. I think we can take our HARP applications en masse, at least to start. The committee recommended approving all A through F as, you know, approved by HARP. Any, any questions, comments, anything stand out, Don, on, on these applications?
Uh, not, not really. The HARP recommendations are there when they had some comments to make. Let me just. Yeah, there was nothing dramatic.
Anyone else on council have any comments or questions? Anyone else in attendance have any comments or questions on the HARM certificates of appropriateness? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the HARP certificates of appropriateness?
So moved.
Thank you, Don.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Hi.
Mr. Braceon.
Yes.
Mr. Gally.
Yes, thank you. The next item on our agenda is 19A, which is approval of last month's Borough Council meeting minutes. Any comments regarding last month's meeting minutes? Anyone that want to move that we approved last month's meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the April 2021 Borough Council meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa and Don. Mike?
Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Hi.
Mr. Braceon.
Yes.
Mr. Gally.
Yes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to enter into an agreement with ECO, I'm sorry, E-Consult Solutions to perform an economic impact and equity study for the SEPTA, potential SEPTA extension. The dollar amount request for the borough is $6,000. The total amount of the study will be $26,000. Does anyone have any comments or questions on 19B?
Gally, Bernie Flynn.
Yeah, Bernie.
All right, I went through the line item budget, line item budgets that we have in the borough. Under boards and commissions, we, council has $1,000 to the railroad commission. And there is not, there is no additional $6,000 to be had at this particular time. So at this, I, I'm not endorsing it at this time until we have more funds to our parking. Funds are below, are below 50% or at 50%, so we don't have any excess cash laying around to fund this, this offer at this particular time.
Anybody else have any comments or questions on this?
Yeah, one of the things, if you read the feasibility study from 2018 by SEPTA, it's plain, which is a very detailed document, by the way, it's quite interesting. This is, this project is a low priority project for SEPTA. And it's, I think there's some other lines that are much higher up on their priority list. Further, with this specific request here, I, I wonder why, what the borough should have to pay for an economic impact study when, you know, I would think that would be something the communities around here could do if we do it, but the, the probability of it being extended, it's, it's not going to happen anytime soon. And even if you were to go through with this study, by the time they got around to saying, we're going to build it, this would change. And I, I've commented to a couple of people, I, to John and Kelton, actually. I said, well, if I write a check for, because it's a lot more than 360 million dollars, which is option A from three different options, the way they could go, I said, but if I write a check for 360 million dollars and give it to SEPTA, I wonder if they'd still go through with it, and I, I wonder about that. Because it's, it's a nine mile runner. I've seen what they've done from east of Wawa, which is, it's a major, major thing. It would be three times greater than that to come the nine miles out to Westchester, so I I'm, I, I'm not supportive of this in any way. I am supportive of restoring rail service, don't get me wrong at all. I love trains. But practically speaking, I don't think this is a wise choice.
Well, as I understand it, this is the next step in the process to restore rail service. I think if I'm, if I'm not wrong, that the 20, the other $20,000 is going to come from the county?
$11,000.
Yeah, currently, maybe just add a little clarity, the county's offered some grant money, $11,000. The borough has, has $9,000 budgeted. What was added was an extra piece to the study, which, you know, ends up adding about $6,000 more to the contract. So even if, if you didn't approve the, the additional $6,000, we could still go along with the study minus the additional component.
What was the additional component, Mike?
That's what's in the agenda item to go back to the, I guess it's the economic benefit. There you go, right there.
So it's the economic impact and then there's an, an additional component.
May, may I?
And who is that? Thanks, Jordan. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so the first of all, you've already allocated the funds for the economic impact study. That's the 9,000 and then, and then therefore, with that approval, the, you went forward and applied for a grant, the VPP grant that was successful, the second round, which is $11,000 from the county, so. That's aside. The additional monies are for adding an equity component, so an equity impact, not just the economic impact, which is related, but in particular, the equity is looking at the lower socioeconomic areas and how those areas would potentially benefit or not. It's an independent study from rail service to, to Westchester. Having that information from a third party who's a professional in the field would provide potential additional ammunition when it comes to applying for hundreds of millions of dollars.
Thanks, Jordan. Anyone else on council want to comment on this item?
Mr. Gally, Bernie Flynn.
Yeah, Bernie.
Earlier this evening, I received a, a a email from Mr. Largas, Eric Largas. And he said he doesn't understand the persistent request for hiring lobbyists and consultants for the railroad idea when it's not even on SEPTA's 12-year plan. First step should be to hold a roundtable that Scott Bryant offered to arrange. Next is to make this regional effort with West Goshen and West Town, sharing the expenses for any consultants deemed necessary. Judging from the PENDOT 2018 study, this, our, our railroad to Westchester is a very low priority. Economic studies will not affect priorities. That's the email I got from Eric Largas, and I promised that I would read it during the, the time.
I don't understand why an economic study wouldn't impact the where this fell on a priority list, right? Like, if this, if an economic study demonstrated tremendous amount of positive economic impact from this project, it would be stupid to not have it go up a priority list. I mean, I don't think that that's logical at all. I mean, maybe SEPTA's illogical, I don't, I don't know, but it seems to me that if we could demonstrate a tremendous amount of impact, and, and candidly, if we could demonstrate a tremendous amount of impact to underserved communities, that that wouldn't raise our status on a priority list, both at SEPTA and with, you know, the powers that be in the federal government in terms of allocating, you know, the billions of dollars that are going to go into the Northeast Corridor, but I think Jordan had his hand up.
Just to say, thank, thank you for recognizing, uh, Mr. Gally. Just to say, first of all, Eric Largas is running for political office, so I don't think we should be running his ads through any, any Borough Council member, for one thing. Two, I think we should call a spade a spade, okay? Are we for rail service or are we not for rail service? Because the way that we pursue actually getting, getting towards, towards bringing rail service back to Westchester is taking the necessary steps in order to do that. The way these things become priorities is when the communities ask for them and have the information and show their commitment towards them time and time again over incremental steps. So having this information is important to continuing to step down the path along with all the progress that we've made over the last seven years. So, you know, let, I think we owe it to our disadvantaged communities to add this component to, to the study so that we can have more information that can then ultimately lead us further down the path and bring us higher and higher on the priority list. Now, if that's not a priority of, of certain council members or anyone else in the community, that's okay, but just say it.
I'm, I'm very familiar with this line, and it is mostly rural from Elwin all the way out to Westchester. There are barely, I mean, disadvantaged communities, where? There aren't any. It goes through the woods for the most part, and so I I don't, that doesn't hold water with me, and just because a community wants something, you know, you ask 1,000 people if you want the train back, everyone's going to say yes. But this is a SEPTA decision, it isn't, I, I, you know, and another thing, someone mentioned that it would, you know, raise property values. Again, I don't know why SEPTA would be interested in that. I mean, coming to Westchester, yeah, we would, there would be ridership, but between here and Wawa, I, I don't think there's going to be much. Like I said, I'm real familiar with this line. And I, I think we do this, we're, we're just wasting money. Uh, and I think
It's clear you're against restoration rail service to Westchester.
No, I'm not.
You, you're absolutely against restoration rail service to Westchester, it's very clear no matter what you say. Um, so, you know, let's put that aside and for people that are actually for restoration rail service to, to Westchester, let's have an, a, a real truthful discussion about the best way forward. And the best way forward is to commit very minimum resources um, in, in order to continue the incremental steps to be in a position to ask for major funding. And this is one of those incremental steps to be in a position to ask for incremental funding.
Not just
I, I, look, I don't, I, I support the restoration of rail service, hundred percent. I've never wavered from that, so don't tell me that. Uh, and, you know, just because, again, because a community wants something or there's support where this or that, that's not gonna make Septa spend three hundred and sixty million dollars and maybe two, three years of work. This is not a question of being against rail service, there's nothing I'd like more than to see a train coming up those tracks, nothing.
Mr. Gally, may I?
Yeah, give me one second, Lisa. Don, Septa's not the only entity that we're trying to convince, it, it may not sway Septa.
I'm aware of that.
If he wants it and the economic impact study shows that it'll raise property values, but that may very well convince Chrissy Houlihan, uh, that it's a, a worthy project and, and she's gonna be in a position uh, to potentially find three hundred and sixty million dollars over the next couple of years, uh, go ahead, Lisa.
I, I think that I, I think Mr. Flynn, uh, raised the most valid point with his original comments around it's not in the budget, right? We've had almost a decade of not raising taxes, um, and left us in a lurch this year. And we had to make some very hard decisions when we were faced with the pandemic. I think the bottom line is it's, the timing is not right for us right now for allocating extra funds that had not been budgeted. Um, and it's not something that I think we can make a prudent financial decision on and it's, is it something we can go, do in the future? Maybe, when, when we're in a different financial sit- situation, right now, we can't do that and then have to look at passing that burden on to residents next year.
Right.
I mean, this is already the longest conversation we've had about spending six thousand dollars. I, I think in, in quite some time, uh, even during the pandemic. Uh, I'm sure if we wanted to spend six thousand dollars, we could spend six thousand dollars without a whole lot of, uh, uh, tears. Eternally in the borough, uh, i- if you don't, if, if we don't wanna spend it, I, I guess it sounds to me like the, the question is really, do we want the equity study or not? Because the other economic impact study has already been budgeted and we've already gotten the county money. So, sounds like that'll still go forward. But the question is distilled down to, do we wanna add the equity study for six thousand dollars? Um, I mean, I, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, I think we have three folks who do. Um, so unless, unless there, the other three who haven't spoken yet agree with me, um, you know,
Yeah. Mr. Gally, thank, thank you for framing that and that, that is the nature of it. Um, it is whether we want it or not, because if we want it, here's, now's the time. Obviously with this other study, it's a add-on, it's not a separate thing. Um, and you're talking about six thousand dollars and you're talking about interest rates at point eight percent of six thousand dollars between now and next year, you know, I'll, I'll give you twenty bucks, okay? So the, the, the real question is, do we care about this or do we not care about this? Because if we care about it, this is an easy decision, another Sue Bane no-brainer. Um, so that's what this vote is. Let, let, let's just be clear about that and black and white about that.
Mr. Mayor Gally? Yeah. Then we, we agreed to spend the six thousand dollars. Where do you want me to find the six thousand dollars at? What, what do you want me to cut in order to give you the six thousand dollars? Because something has to be cut.
Well, the library would you say is the best place?
I, I know, I personally, I don't think it's a, uh, a good idea to put me in a position just to come up with six thousand dollars on, on a whim. But we could take it from council salaries and the mayor's salary, how about that?
Enough of that, you can take it from mine, if you'd like, there's not enough there, unfortunately.
Uh, I mean, you mean from a budgetary standpoint, Bernie, where would we move the money?
Yeah, I mean, uh, current, we, we moved as, as much money as we could when we had the savings earlier in the year, uh, to take full advantage and benefit of it at that time. And we thought we had enough on the, in the railroad fund at nine thousand, then the eleven thousand from the county. Uh, I, I spoke with Barn, I spoke with Mr. Perona and I looked at the, the line item budget. Uh, right, because parking is below fifty percent, the parking was above fifty percent, we would have a lot more cash. But we're not there yet and I don't, we're going to be there until, uh, the latter August or September. And that's our cash cow and what
Let me ask you a question, Bernie.
Somebody.
The, the library paid off the loan that it had to the borough a year early. So our budget should have additional revenue that we didn't budget for twenty twenty. There's six, right there, I, I found it off the top of my head.
Yeah, un- unfortunately, that money went into the capital reserve where it was borrowed from. So we had to, we had to, we had to put it back in there.
So, so we're just mov- moving around when it's convenient for burning?
Mr. Gally?
I, I think it's probably take a vote, might be easier this way.
Go ahead, Nick.
Um, so, Mr. Flynn, are you talking about we're fifty percent down in the garages?
Is that? The, well, the, uh, the, the, uh, uh, presentation that Mr. Met- Metrick gave us last week, he showed us that our, our parking, our parking, uh, garages and our, our, we had a good month, uh, better than expected, but we're still down fifty percent.
Right, I just mean, because two slides later, it says, financial results are good. Early meter revenue is doing better than expected, about up forty percent. Two consecutive months of above budget performance in early twenty twenty-one. And, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but wouldn't we just call this at the end of the year a six thousand dollar overspend on this line item? And it would balance out, how it balances out?
You'd have to ask Barbara and Mr. Perona that.
I mean, I think Jordan's point is well taken that, that we're spending a lot of time talking about the financial aspect of this. When on a monthly basis, we spend, uh, money like this without issue. Uh, and we figure out a way to make it work, we take it from here, we can put it there. Um, you know, so I do think the point is well taken that to the extent that there's an objection to the six thousand dollars, it feels like more of an objection to, um, the plan. I, I mean, one of the points that's being made in the chat right now is stop giving away, uh, free parking to the restaurants. Um, you know, we, we did that, what, a month ago with, with little hesitation?
And my objection though.
Yeah, yeah, you're consistent, Bernie, I'll give you that. Um, but it, it just, it strikes me that we're having a straw man argument about the six thousand dollars and not about the purpose of the quest. Because, like I said, when we first started discussing this, I, I'm not sure I remember a time that we spent this much time discussing six thousand dollars. And, and pretending as though we couldn't find it in, in our budget somewhere. Um, but hey, you know, maybe we should just make a motion or if anyone's willing and, and if there's a second and vote on it.
Well, that's one way to stop the arg- uh, the, uh, discussion, I mean, motion.
Can I make a comment, uh, from the public? I'll second it and then we can do comments.
Yeah, thank you. Go, go ahead, who is this?
Sorry, did you get your second?
Yes, thank you, motion by Bernie, second by Nick.
All right, thanks. I think Jordan
I have a lit, uh, L. Kearns and an Matt Adams, e- either one of you, if you're ready, go for it.
Hi, okay, this is, this Lisa Kearns, I'm a resident in the three hundred block of West Biddle Street. And, um, although I'm, I'm feeling that comments on this issue that might uh, be opposed to the motion is kind of being discouraged. I'm, I'm gonna try to ask my question anyway, so bear with me here. So, this is, a- as I understand, six thousand dollars of, um, taxpayers' money, Westchesterman. And, and I honestly do appreciate there being care i- in discussing how we're gonna spend six thousand dollars. I know six thousand dollars doesn't seem like a lot to you guys apparently, but it, it is to the, it is to folks like me. Um, but anyway, so if, if, if I understand it, there's, um, there are these three things that we're thinking of adding and they're, okay, three minutes, I got, sorry. Um, and they're, they're specific to the improvements, the benefits. Well, one could argue that if you spend three hundred million dollars on rehabbing housing and other, um, upgrades in our less advantaged Westchester neighborhoods, the, the, the property values would go up immensely as well. So to just say, is this spending of three hundred thousand, would it help the residents? Well, there's a whole lot of other things that would help the residents i- if you spent that kind of money on it. So I, I'm, 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 I'm not supportive of this a- a- at the moment, given my understanding.
Thank you, Lisa, uh, Matt?
Yep, I'm here, thanks, everyone, Matt Adams, uh, I live at, uh, six oh seven Elizabeth Street. And I haven't been part of the, all the rail conversations, but I do come from experience living in the Washington DC area, working in the district and living in Arlington, which didn't have rail service in the section I lived in, but had a phenomenal bus transit to the closest rail station. So I would just ask that, you know, if there is an economic study done and a cost benefit analysis, it also should be run for the bus route from Westchester to Exton, because you, you have an option of both Amtrak and Septa. So as a commuter, it's all about time. So from a bus to get to Exton on Amtrak, I can get to thirtieth street and save twenty minutes over any line Westchester could ever do through Elwin. And I just think that needs to be taken into consideration, because at three hundred and sixty-five million dollars over a hundred years, you could spend ten thousand dollars a day on buses and you'd, you'd equal out over a hundred years. So I just think if there's gonna be a study, it needs to be, it needs to take into account the benefits of a bus, because to me, I did it every day and it was completely fine and with an Amtrak that literally has two stops into Philly, why wouldn't that be on the table as well? So that's my only comment, thank you.
Hey, Matt?
Quick response to, to those, um, by me.
Yeah, briefly, because we do have a motion pending.
Okay, just that, um, this specific study is for this rail line. This has been something that's been actually going on for, uh, a year plus. Um, there's been a grant, um, application through the county for this rail, uh, service, um, restoration rail service to Westchester through the old R three line. There's no ability to add additional, um, scope at this stage. Um, and we, uh, and for the first comment, um, w- we don't have a pot of three hundred million dollars where we can choose to allocate at different places. What we're attempting to do is get information, uh, in order to apply to, to the federal government essentially for grant money specific to this. Uh, there may be other instances and opportunities, um, for other issues going on in Westchester for grant applications on their own merit, uh, but it's not related specifically, um, to this issue.
But Jordan
If I, if I, if I might, um, you know, we're talking about six thousand dollars, but this, this whole thing, discussion, it, this goes so far beyond six thousand dollars, uh, this has to do with a gigantic project. And, yeah, it's a sort of thing, everyone's talking about this with, you know, from the standpoint of wish fulfillment, it isn't like that. Um, it's just, this is, this is a big, big issue. Uh, I, it's just, I, I just, this is crazy, uh, you know, I just think we're being snickered here. Um, this isn't a question of just these studies. And if we're gonna do these studies, if it's appropriate for Westchester to do the studies, then the surrounding municipality should do it as well. Um, but now's not the time. I mean, it is a low priority for Septa, they have made that absolutely clear. So I, I just, I don't see the point in doing any of this now. Uh, you know, if Septa were to come along and say, well, you know, we're gonna look at that next year, okay, that would be the time to do it. Uh, you know, it just, Septa's priorities are, are a lot different than ours. It isn't just because you care about the railroad or you care about the community, it, it, there's much more to it than that. Uh, and it's bottom line, it's not our decision, we, no matter what we say, you know, Septa knows how much we want the rail uh, service restored, but it's gonna be a financial decision on their part, is it gonna, you know, if they build it, is it gonna support itself? I don't know, uh, there aren't, there aren't gonna be very, very many stops. Uh, there won't be parking in, enough parking anyway and enough in a number of those, uh, areas. So this is much greater than six thousand dollars, much greater. And I, I, I'm trying to look at it from a global perspective and we're not doing that here, this is greater than six thousand dollars.
I, I appreciate Don actually being honest here and saying what, what this vote is about, it's not the six thousand dollars. And that's what we're asking, you know, I mean, listen, if it's about six thousand dollars, uh, one point five percent interest for a year is ninety dollars, okay? I mean, you, we spent six thousand dollars without even blinking on anything else. So I appreciate at least an honest conversation about whether people are interested in pursuing rail service to Westchester or not and voting they're conscious in that respect. Thank you to, to Don for actually being honest in that. So six, th- this, to, to, to me, to the twenty eighteen feasibility study said, absolutely rail service is entirely feasible. And it's, it's about
Feasible, yes.
It's about money, excuse me, it's about, it's about finding the money. And now we have Joe Biden with eighty billion dollars for rail service in his infrastructure package. And we're at the precipice of being able to potentially move this, this project forward very quickly. And if you don't think right now is the time to have the information we need to potentially get a piece of eighty billion dollars to bring rail service back to Westchester, you either don't care or you're not paying attention. And so whatever the, the, the result of this vote, please let it be whether you want rail service to Westchester back or not, because that's the reality of it.
Uh, you know, first of all, the, if you accuse me of not wanting rail service back, uh, I'm gonna be upset, uh, but the eighty million dollar infrastructure program, uh, I, 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 I will bet you that that will go mostly towards the improvement of existing infrastructure and high-speed rail. Uh, and it's, uh, a- a- again, uh, maybe we need to be prepared, but if they're gonna build this, it's not gonna be anytime soon.
It's about the chicken or the egg, and we need to provide the resources in order for it to be made to, for us to be able to provide the information we need in order to be allocated the funds. If we don't have the information, we don't have the justification, the studies behind us, we're gonna get passed over, it's that simple. It, it's one plus one equals two here, this is, this is not rocket science.
Mr. Gally, Bernie Flynn?
The reality is that if, if we do a study, the answer may still be no. Of, of course, that, that's a possible result of this process. But if we don't invest in the process, the answer will be no. Uh, you're, you're, you're you're gonna end up with the result that you're afraid of if you don't take any action to avoid it. Um, and that's why I think it makes sense to move forward with this at this point. Now, we may still get a no in five years and ten years and twenty years, whatever. Um, i- if we do everything right along the process, but we may Um, i- if we do everything right along the process, but we may get a yes. Uh, and I think that that would be a, have a dramatically positive impact for our town generally.
All those studies be required again in, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, they would be invalid if they're conducted today. Right? And the railroad is not ready for another ten or fifteen years. Those economic and equity studies would have to be revisited.
Maybe, I mean, we're all, we're all making a, a lot of assumptions here and as far as I know, none of us are. Are rail restoration experts.
Suusayers. Mr. Gally, Bernie Flynn?
Yeah.
Just called a question.
Any other comment from anyone on council?
I would just ask, what is the motion on the floor?
Yeah.
The motion is to approve the request.
Ms. Dorsey.
Yeah.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
No.
Mr. Stefano.
Yes.
Mr. Scott. Mr. Scott. You're on mute, Bill.
Yes.
Mr. Braceley.
No.
Mr. Gally.
Yes, the motion passes four to three.
Thank you, council. You are ridiculous.
Stop it, stop it, stop it, stop, 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 stop.
We're done talking about this agenda item. Last item on the agenda. If I can. Computer's not cooperating. Is other business, am I right?
Yes.
Does anyone else have other business? I ha- I do have one thing that I wanna talk about.
Does it involve six thousand dollars?
You know, maybe we should have like a borough council yard sale, uh, in, in, uh, in the parking lot, you know? Uh, put all of our money towards, you know, borough council pet projects. Um, the, so I know the county is going back to in-person meetings. Uh, I know some of the local townships and municipalities are going back to in-person meetings starting next month. Uh, and I wanted to gauge, uh, council and Mike's and, and Jordan's interest. In considering that we do the same thing. Next month, uh, you know, I'm obviously not sure what everyone's status is in terms of being. Uh, and certainly, if you have objection to this and don't wanna voice it online and wanna voice it offline, then go for it, but.
The, the, the one, the one legal matter is, uh, I don't think council's gonna have a choice next month. Uh, once the, the emergency declaration is done, unless the governor extends, which he has not done yet. The ability to have virtual public meetings will be forced to have an in-person public meeting. So, the staff is gearing up to meet in person, um. For all of our June meetings at this point.
Okay, well, that. Let's us, let's. Assume that the governor, um. Does extend it, uh. Unless there's. Subjection, my call, that you can voice now or at a later date, I think we should just plan to do it, um, next month either way.
I, I, I would just say, you know, giving it a one-month buffer might not be the worst thing in the world, um. You know, we might not wanna lead the pack here.
Um, well, but to Mike's point, we may not have a choice next month.
Okay, well, fair enough then.
Yeah, yeah, if I could comment, I think, I think I, I'd have a really hard time. Uh, supporting, keeping it us virtual if there are no restrictions by the state. So. Um, you're right, I don't know what everybody's statics is. I can, I'm happy to tell you that I'm vaccinated fully, um, but, um. I think we, I think we have to go back in person. I mean, I don't think we have to, but I think we should, um.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mike. Uh, and I'm also lucky enough to be vaccinated. Um, there is much about whether it will continue to be a virtual element. Uh, I know that Bill Mann has been working on that to allow for, uh, there to be. Continue to be live streaming of council meetings. Uh, I'm not sure, Bill, uh, if you're still. Available, whether you've sorted out the, uh, technical aspects of that.
Yeah, we're, 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 we haven't tried it out, uh, totally. We had a couple of trial runs. Uh, probably the best thing to do is to wait for the council meetings to try it. And we'll, and we'll, you know, whatever there's bugs, we'll fix them as we go.
Cool. Uh, so that, that, a number of the questions in the chat were about there being a remote option and. Um, for everyone that's asking that question, uh, just know that yes, we're working on that, and, uh. Uh, hopefully we'll be able to, um, sort that out with as few glitches as possible. So absent some, uh, absent some change, we'll plan to meet in person starting in June. There is a, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to scroll back up the chat. Uh, Kyle Hudson also had a, a comment.
Hi, yes, Kyle Hudson, five twenty-four West Marshall Street. Um, along the lines of what they're asking. Um, when it comes to these virtual meetings, I noticed that they aren't being kept on the website. Um, I was wondering if maybe at the communications committee next wo- next month. Uh, we could do, uh, council could develop a policy that instructs. The videos to be, I mean, posted online. I mean, it's twenty twenty-one, I don't understand why we can't put them on YouTube like Coatsville does. Um, it would cost us no money to host them and then they could stay up forever. Uh, I, I, I don't understand why we're not doing that and it, I just think that that's. We need to start thinking long-term with live streaming. You know, that before the COVID crisis, I was live streaming all the meetings. All of those meetings from twenty nineteen are still available on Facebook, but the meetings from twenty twenty that the, that the government made are not. And that concerns me. So I would like to see a policy put in place to make sure that these recordings are kept and maintained. Hopefully transcribed and searchable so that they're ADA compliant. Um, I think that this is a new thing that we're doing and I hope it stays permanent. And I think we need to come up with rules about how it's going to be maintained.
It sounds like a perfect topic for the act committee.
To see that on the agenda next month, I guess is what I'm saying.
Who's, who's act, Nick?
Yep, that's me, sounds good to me.
Awesome, I'll be at the meeting next month.
Um, any other business? Alright, well, uh, I'm very impressed and happy that we are done, uh, at eight forty-five in a month where we had no work session. I appreciate, uh, everyone's time. Uh, everyone have a great, uh, Memorial Day and we'll actually see all of your smiling faces next month.